All right brethren, thank you, thank you Creator. Oh, thank you again Creator for another opportunity to try to be a light while I'm in this reality and to be able to meet with my brethren, have fellowship with my brethren who are like-minded, who seek to do, who seek to redeem the time while we are in this reality. I want to thank you Creator for the newfound wisdom that you give me nearly on a daily basis and I have to trust the same thing is true with my brethren, that you're showing us how we preparing us to bring us on stage so to speak in the world, teaching us how to listen to you. It seems as if you have kept this thing secret from the world, the secret being that you worked, that I think it's an open secret where you show that you speak to us through our soul. And thank you that you seem to be giving me the inspiration to talk about the way to grow the soul, to make it more sensitive to how you speak to us through the soul. Thank you Creator for showing us how to confirm our soul, how to educate our soul and for that time when we will be called upon to be a greater light in this, in this reality, which I believe is soon, very soon, I think that you, you are not only witnessing to brethren in the what this, what the Western hemisphere but all over the world. I, I have to believe that this is how you're preparing us to be a, to help bring about the kingdom on earth as it is in heaven. So Creator, thank you and I pray you'll anoint me to be able to talk and share and help my brethren to get a real kick out of being with one another and, and, and partaking of this unique, this, this special, this, um, secret that the world doesn't seem interested in and sharing it with us, giving it to us and I just hope and pray you glorify yourself here on the video today. So brother, thank you, my name is Shai Kwa Ben Yisrael. Thank you for joining me, my channel where I try to reach out, I try to share the light. So I try to redeem the time, that's all, that's all I try to do. Elijah Mahalia, thank you, joining me and anybody else who comes and looks at this video. Again, welcome, it's a channel, it's not for everybody and I sincerely mean that. This ain't a channel for everybody and, uh, camera. It's not a channel for everybody. When you read, it seems like brethren who have always, I don't, even with the Bible, you know, it seems that, um, I don't know, I could be wrong, that it's always been, uh, you know, at the start, a small group of brethren who get everything started, get it rolling. I don't know, I could be wrong, but it seems like the truth, the Creator's truth, it's not very popular, it's not really, it don't really have no value in this reality. I mean, it's just like Noah's ark, if, uh, you know, I know that was fiction, the way the Bible presents it, but I think that the Creator, he uses the Bible to, I think he still uses it, although I don't see where he claims it as his word, but I think he still uses it to give us a picture of spiritual things, like the other day I was talking about Jesus Christ and his story, the New Testament and I don't believe that the New Testament, Jesus Christ ever existed, but I believe the Creator, he gave it to us to show us spiritual things and I was mentioning how I believe that he's telling us how we're gonna come on scene. We, that how, you know, scholars, one of the reasons why they debunked the Bible is because they can't find corroborating witnesses about his youth. They can't find corroborating witnesses about his youth. They can't find corroborating accounts, they can't find any works of antiquity, they can't find any documents. I think that they have one instance where they talk about he struck some kid blind and even that is suspect and so it's the same way with faith, it's just like, we're here, you know, the Jesus Christ of the New Testament, he came on the scene at around 30 or you know, so years old, he was here amongst the people, they didn't know it and then all of a time, all of a sudden, you know, he came on the scene, all of a sudden. That's why I was making a statement the other day about, I think that the Creator's showing us, he gonna use that to show you brethren, how you're gonna come on the scene. Now I could be wrong, I don't think I am, but I know that we come on the scene somehow and that, uh, it seems that the Creator is going to bring his brethren, his brother or his children, his sons and daughters who have elected to take this path and to attain to his voice. I, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I could, it just, I'm just sharing what's been and what I'm inspired to say, just sharing what I'm inspired to say, but it seems to me that brethren are gonna come on the scene as the second resurrection. That's a bunch of people all over the world, all, all of a sudden, you know, making chairs, dance and sing, you know, in other words, empowering great glory, sons and daughters, you know, been amongst the people, you know, remember Messiah, or Jesus Christ, he came on the scene like he was already in his thirties, he was amongst the people, it's the same way now, man, you know, and they're gonna look at us and how could he, how could he be as, you know, you know, because you know how, you know, questioning that, that guy or that, that sister is a faithless and, you know, I never saw him, you know, studying or talking about or sharing or, you know, you know, like religion does, pushing on people, faithists don't really do that, they don't push the Creator on nobody, that's one thing, that's one big, big difference that I see and. And when you read the philosophy, the Creator, he seemed to say, he seemed to say the same thing, you know, don't push it on people, be sensitive to whether a brother or sister can hear. And I, I'm with, I am so in agreement with that, I, I love that wisdom where it takes the burden, you know, Christianity, religion, it puts the burden on you to, you know, you, you could see videos of brethren out in the snow, you know, freezing, they chops off. When I was in the Hebrew Israelites, they took pride in going out in the wintertime to show their dedication, you know, you'd be out there freezing, man, you know? Nobody would be coming by, you would be preaching to the wind and they got a justification for that too. It's insane what they do, man, you know? I mean, people, why do people just love making things, Prince, where you been brother? Are you doing videos anymore? I haven't seen you around, man. Man, it's good to see you, man, it's good to see you, man. All right. Omen now? Brethren, it's good to see y'all, man, I hope I bless y'all, thank you for checking in. Where you been Prince? I hope you all right, bro? Yeah, yeah, you gotta get back on it, man, you know, time is short, the opportunity is now. Great opportunity now, man, you know, but it's good to see you, man, thanks for checking in, good to see you. So, what was I saying? So, uh, let me see, um. I think that, um. Oh, man, I forgot what I was saying, um. Let me see. Personally, I think that the second resurrection, it comes as, in the philosophy, it talks about the second resurrection coming as a wave of people, all of a sudden, they coming on the earth, nobody know where we came from and, you know, the Creator, he don't, he don't let us build like churches and a whole bunch of brethren getting, he come to you secretly, you know? He picked this one and then he picked that one, you know, somebody in Mississippi, then he go get with somebody in New York, then he go get somebody in Montana, you know, and then Arizona and, you know, it seemed to me that's the way the Creator work, you know? I love it, man, he comes secretly, you know, so that, because, um, you know, religion, you know, the church, you know, all, you know, everybody, we, we just had a big earthquake out here the other day, seven point earthquake is no joke at all. And when these things happen, it produces a fruit, it produces a harvest. The first thing people do is start talking about Jesus Christ. I saw this video, this woman was being arrested. And at first, and it was her own fault. And Omen, I can join you today. I can join you today, Omen. I got the cinnamon tea here and I don't mind if I do take a sip with you. It's got vanilla almond milk in it. So she was getting arrested and it was her fault, you know, the police officer said, here, sign this form, she said, never doubt, he said, you're gonna get arrested. And she's, and, and so she acted like she was doing something on her phone and that, that policeman, he said, hey, sign this form, Nazarene? Oh, okay, you know, I'm thinking about moving, well, no, I'm more than likely gonna be moving to either Tucson or Yuma, probably Tucson at this point, Nazarene, I didn't know you were in there, are you driving, Nazarene? Yeah, Arizona, I'm gonna be in, I'll probably end up in Tucson, I've been looking at apartments in Tucson. Tucson or Yuma for some reason, so we'll see. So anyway, uh, the lady, you know, that policeman, he said, lady, he said, now this your final warning, you don't sign this ticket, you going to jail. And she just was as rebellious as could be. And that cop, he put, he put down that, that, that notebook and that pen, he said, turn around. And now, when she saw that she was getting arrested, she wanted to sign the form, see? And then, okay, you in Tempe, oh, y'all live there, oh, okay. All right, man, you know, Malachi, he live in Phoenix, Dave Long, he lives in, uh, um, oh, I forget where he's at, Glendale or no, somewhere else? That's probably where everybody gonna be moving to Arizona, you know? See, so, um, and that brings to mind another thing, you know? About cities, but anyway, that cop, he, he threw her down to the ground and then she knew she was getting arrested then. See, and she changed her mind, yeah, I'll sign the form, I'll sign the form, he said, nope, it's too late, you going to jail. And she started calling out for Jesus and I said, you know, that's just like the world, man, that's just like the world, you know? It's just like the world, man, you know, you gotta get in trouble and then you call out to your deity and not only do you call out to him, but then don't nothing happen for you. She said, oh, Jesus, 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 you know? And I just said, man, that poor woman, you know, a poor woman. And so the Creator, you know, I mean, some calamity come and people, they run, right? And then there's even another harvest for, for Luamang. Now Nazarene, you said something there that sparked a thought that I had in my mind. And I like always knowing what it's all about, this thing that we're in, our involvement, I like to cut all the fat, I don't like to waste time and I like to get busy, I like to get busy, the redeeming the time, you know, cutting, cutting all the fat so I could be the most benefit to myself and the others, why? Because that's what the Creator sees the value. He seen the value, learning how to be the most benefit to yourself and others, because that's what, that's what gives true, that's what we all really are looking for now. So far as, um, what the brother said here about, uh, moving or being in Arizona, you know, I had a thought earlier before the video that the Creator, we here, we up here learning about the soul, it seems like the Creator's got me under this sense. It seems like the Creator's got me under this sensation to 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 share about the soul, to be sensitive about the soul. How the soul operates, you know, and he gave me an analogy. Where now nine eleven, when the towers fell, there was a a um, some information came out about a certain people, those people. Okay, talking in code, those people, there starts with a J and ends with a S. Those people were given messages to get out or don't go to work on that day, all right? Here, I could just, let me see, well. I'll, well, maybe I won't, cuz it'll probably be hard to find. I was gonna go on the internet and just type in this one system that was used called Odigo. If y'all want, y'all can type that in, find out about it yourself. Now, this is a system where those people, they were all connected to it. That that was an app they were using in K A, Fritz. All right, brother, Fritz. Good to see you, brother, Fritz, brother. So they had this app that it was, see, like we, like you brethren are here, right? Not everybody is here. Now, if I said, if 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 an angel came to me, if I came under inspiration and uh angel, angel told me to tell y'all, and I knew in my soul that uh I got the confirmation somehow, or any or any brother or sister, okay? Like in the chat here, or 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 we know him, we know him as a faithist. And then they came on, they say, brethren, I received a word from the Creator. And he's telling us, he's getting ready to move us all to Arizona, you know, over to Nazarene's house. You know, he get right, on the fifteenth of January, everybody is gonna be visited by the angel. And the angels are gonna transport us and move us here. See, not the, in other words, the message ain't gonna go out to everybody. See? The Creator seems to say that our soul is the way that he can, he inspires us, he communicates with us. And not everybody will get that message, cuz you haven't prepared your soul. You know, it's clogged up. You know, you did not take the time to cleanse your the the, you know, uh what's a good word for uh? You know, to cleanse the pipes, to cleanse the communication channels so that the connection was broken, cuz you didn't take the time to maintain your soul, to affirm it, you know, to prepare it. And so, the Creator, he is, he speaks to the people who are prepared. You know? And so, that's, I perceive that, I mean, I I'm just saying that example, I don't know, you know, I'm you know, about uh the Creator coming to us and giving us instructions and, you know, for brethren and they 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 are operating in sincerity and truth. Because the, it seems obvious that he wants us to be to be together. That he wants us to live as a city. Because that's your greatest joy, man. Imagine, imagine, man, living amongst all of us living, you know, I did get another thought. The Creator, he gave me another thought. Just today, about an hour before, you know, I came on video, I was sitting up here thinking. And the Creator said, you know, yeah, I quabbed that that, or I don't, you see, I don't like to say that, but I don't know how else to say it. The inspiration. I was talking about that office building, you know, I, how I used to deliver down to San Francisco, big office buildings and a bunch of privileged people and the life they used to live and, you know, and uh I use that as an example of uh how we, I uh perceive that we will be working with one another, will be together with one another, will be gathered together, faith this will be. And the inspiration that came to me was, you know, yeah, I quabbed, that office building is a city. And you brethren are gonna be gathered together to work as one. The second resurrection, either here on earth or in the spiritual, at some point. You are going to uh the 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 objective of the Creator is for us to be together in a city. A gathering. To be together, to be with one another. So right now, it's like, we're we're scattered. But I think the glory of the Creator is at some point, you know, he may give the message to one of you brethren or myself, or, you know, some brother or sister in our nation, I say our nation. Where they get a word from the angel. And the angel says, all right, on January, on on January fifteen. Can can y'all hear me if I whisper? Type one if y'all can hear me. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Test, test, one, two, three. Cuz I gotta whisper to get my point across. Testing, one, two, three. Test, test. Can anybody, if you can hear me, type one. Okay, you can hear me, Mahalia, okay, if I whisper, okay. Now, let's say the Creator, he see, he said the angel, and then the angel, you know, to some brother or sister, right? And then the angel come on, he say, hey, every everybody listen. The aid on January fifteen, the angel is gonna come. Y'all, Ashar is gonna come to y'all. And he gonna, he gonna move y'all out. The world calls it the Exodus. But really, it's just the Creator bringing, preparing you brethren to minister to the world. But what he gonna do? Is he gonna bring y'all to Arizona, over to Nazarene Asene's house? I'm gonna bring all y'all together. See, he whispering, you know? Brethren who they they affirm their soul, they working on their soul, they learning to listen to the Creator. Remember, we looked at the video yesterday, it said that we are gonna, we, the angels are gonna start more powerfully appearing to us. It said, but we're not ready just right yet, cuz our mindset is not ready. But see, the will of the Creator is for us to be together. And also got some more inspiration. See, Mahalia or Aisana does not hear about something she said. I was trying to share about the system that we more than likely will live under. And uh she equated what I was saying with a barter system. And uh the inspiration I got was that, no, that's not so. It's gonna be like a free society. It ain't gonna be no, in order to promote me, to get you to meet this need that I give you this, I don't see that. I see it as like, you know, what's a good word for the Essenes? Where they held nothing in common. You had a need and a brother had it? Well, a brother is gonna have it. There's not gonna be a brother or sister without a, are you kidding me, man? The faithist? It's time for the soul affirmations. Are you kidding me? The Creator, you can see in the philosophy. The will of the Creator is for brethren to live, and that's the best living, you brother know it is. Can you imagine being, I mean, you know, that city or wherever they're gathered together and you around? Can you think of it, you know, what if we had a church to go to? Where we all could be there. Brethren wouldn't leave. We wouldn't leave one another, you know? That, I I wouldn't be able to take that, man, you know? Have ever seen a dog when you let him out, and then his tail is going a hundred thousand miles? That would be me. I couldn't handle that, man. All them brethren there, you know, we learning to get, we with one another. Oh, no, man, I couldn't take that, man. You know, I mean, I'm sincere, you know? And we all want that, you know? We know that we all like-minded. That we can attain to the voice of the Creator. And the Creator, he blesses that site, that type, he would, don't tell me he wouldn't bless that gathering. You don't tell me that, man, you'll never, that'll, you know, time for the soul affirmations. So let me find the soul affirmations. So I'm gonna go to the um I'm gonna go to the uh the, I found a couple of pages. You can't see the screen yet, I'm waiting till I can uh bring it up. I found a couple of pages where it was all about, I mean, you know, um. I found it by, well, I didn't find it by mistake, but in Radiance Anthology. I'm looking for it now, just hold tight so we can do the soul affirmation. Okay, so we can do, we can, we don't have to do the one that I've been uh uh doing. We have different soul affirmations that we can do. Now, the Creator, again, you know, to rehash, Creator said to do it. He said, this is how you grow your soul, and this is how you basically maintain that channel between the Creator and yourself. This is how you maintain it. It's called the aff- affirm your soul, affirm it. Affirm it. That means to um, whatever word you choose, man, it's uh, it's doing maintenance on your soul, you know? You know, it's um you know what I mean? You 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 tell me what the what the word is for. This is how we strengthen our soul, you know? So that, now remember, we read the other day in the video, the angel said, we gonna, we gonna start manifesting to you brethren. Remember, we read that, man, maintenance and Radiance Anthology? But your mindset, they said, your mindset ain't ready yet. But we getting prepared, brethren. You got, we gotta be ready for, you know, you know, all of a sudden, you turn around, hey. Hey, Mahalia, how you doing? Who are you? I'm your angel, I'm your Ashar. It's nice to meet you, you know? January, January fifteen, I'm gonna move you to Arizona, over to Nazarene's place. Where you gonna meet all your brethren and sisters. And the kingdom is gonna get started. It's gonna be a time of great dark, increased darkness and increased light. But you get my drift. Time for the soul affirmations, so let's do these three. See, these are, see, it's all over the place. Look at this page here. You know, and I got more for you. It's even more than this. See, you see the screen there? It's a whole bunch of soul affirmations that the Creator, he want us to, that he want us to say. During the day, you know, you could pick one and just say it all day, man. And the Creator said, you know what? You adding gas to your car, to the soul. Time for the soul affirmations, so let's do, let's see, let's do these three right here. Can you see the screen pretty good? Where I'm gonna start with, I can't highlight it, so I'm gonna do, I'm gonna start here up here where it says, I am a soul, okay? And then go down to verse three where it says, heal my being, okay? Thanks Elijah, cleaning your soul, yeah, like cleaning your room, that perfect. That's what his whole affirmations are. You gotta believe it, man, the Creator, you know, the philosophy and Radiance Anthology says, when you do it together like this, you're creating a force, a vortex, you see? So let's do the soul affirmations for today. I'm gonna do, you see this word up here, I'm gonna start there. I am a soul, and then I'm gonna stop at heal my being. Let's say it three times together on three, okay? Let me see if I can make the screen bigger. I wanna make sure you can see it pretty good. Well, let's see, okay, that should be good enough. Okay, now I'm gonna start up here. And I'm in down here, we're gonna say these three times together, okay? On three, ready? One, two, three. I am a soul, organized of the potencies of the living eternal I am. Verse two, I call all my soul power into expression to quicken all my organs and to reorganize my body into an image of health and perfection. The great spirit, verse three, I'm sorry, verse three. The great spirit is the power that now works through my soul to quicken, purify and heal my being. All right, let's do it again. Verse one. I am a soul, organized of the potencies of the living eternal I am. I call all my soul power into expression, to quicken all my organs and to reorganize my body into an image of health and perfection. Verse three, the great spirit is the power that now works through my soul to quicken, purify and heal my being. One more time, verse one, one, two, three. I am a soul, organized of the potencies of the living eternal I am. Verse two, I call all my soul power into expression to quicken all my organs and to reorganize my body into an image of health and perfection, okay? Verse three, the great spirit is the power that now works through my soul to quicken, purify and heal my being. All right, brethren, the soul affirmations. We do it by faith, the Creator says, it creates a force within us and go, it goes out to the universe. And so, it's the way that the angels and our Ashars we strengthen what they, you know, their operations somehow. So, let's keep on, let's keep doing it by faith, man, let's do it together. Five thirty, at the beginning of the video, like to try to get brethren a little time to come in. And then, at the end of the video, we do it again. So, if nobody wants to come and do it with us, then let's just do it, let's just do it ourselves together. See, that's why I perceive that the inspiration, you know, it's like this is one way that I perceive that we are marked. That we get marked, you know? The Ashars, they make out the reports, you know, they say, okay, you know, the brother here, the sister here is cleaning out her house, okay? So the channels are open, okay, go ahead, make a registry. You know, that we could send messages through, you know, they not, they, their pipes are not all clogged up, you know, the soul affirming. The drain though, that they pouring into their soul is cleaned out their communication channels, you know what I mean? You know, the objective, you read the objective of the Creator, it ain't hard, man. He wants us to be together. He want us to be together in a city all our own, or we could be with one another. I mean, you tell me, I mean, you know, man. That's the happiest life could be, you know? You live with li- a whole bunch of like-minded brethren, you ain't got to worry, you know, you uh uh you're you're like-minded where you uh are ministered to, brethren sincerely care about you. And I I um going back to what uh Aisana said at that a particular time, ah, yes, Elizabeth. Yes, now we dealing with a full house now, man. Full house, sister. Good to see you. Good to see you. I mean, you just gotta imagine, man, you gotta imagine, you got to imagine, man, you know? You just gotta imagine that, I mean, it's simple as that. That's what the Creator has, where we can all get along with one another, you know, we ain't got to, you know, worry about somebody trying to, you know, rule over us. We know that in each of our hearts that we had, we don't got no sake, secret agendas, you know, like uh the world, you know, they win you over. And then, they get your information, uh, hey, brother, where you work at, man? Oh, yeah, I work over here downtown, you know, I work from eight to five Monday through Friday, and then the other person, you telling this to, they 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 writing it all down in their soul, okay? Now, he gonna be out of his house at eight o'clock, and that's when I could bust. Now, he gonna be out of his house at eight o'clock, and that's when I could bust in and take it safe out of his house, you know? And the world, they like that. They size you up to see how best to take advantage of you. Now, I'mma tell the truth. I'mma tell the truth, man, what I've seen in my life. And I think a man and a woman, they do that to each other in the Uzzian Kingdom. Boy, that's good. Thank you, Creator. You know? And you don't find out, you've been duped till later on. It's a terrible shame. See, you don't know the condition of their heart. You don't know if they got materialism in there, if they, you know, they're, cause in this reality, in this world, materialism is king. King, materialism, you know, money, riches. See, you look at the world, the world, it's like a dichotomy, you know? They wanna get together with one another, you know? You see people, they go to the stadiums, you know, and part of it's cause they wanna be with other, other people who root for the same team as they do, and they get together, they have a good time, and, and, but individually, they go out and steal from one another, try to defraud your brother, you know? You wanna get together. You see the sporting events, and you know, you see places where people, they get together, they like to gather, you know, cause there's a good energy there. I mean, you know, what's a good word for, uh, usually? People, you know, go to the nightclubs, you know, they wanna be together, they wanna be with other people. The problem is that, since there is no spiritual foundation, you know, you go to the club, you wanna be with other people, well, you know, guys and, you know, girls wanna chase each other too, you know? But, you know, okay, so let's use the stadium, you know, where the sports are being played, people wanna get together. It's like, the only problem, there's no, no spiritual foundation. And so, it's within people to wanna be joined with one another. The Creator is saying, we, I know that, I, I made you that way. Didn't I teach you to live in cities from the start? To live in cities, cause we're type of people, we need each other, really. You know, talk to one another, enjoy one another's company. The only thing is, we need to be, we need to have that character. You know, we need to, you know, when, you know, we can't, we can't have, you know, I mean, we don't know what's in a person's heart. You talking about a city of faith, this where we know that the Creator will bless our gathering and being together. You ain't no longer gotta worry about, you know, this brother, sister, they got something in their heart, they got something I want, you know, some brother, he, all of a sudden, he befriended me, and little do I know, he want my wife, you know? All of a sudden, he real friendly, and, well, but he really want me because of my wife, you know? Now, I've seen that in real life. You brethren probably have too, you know what I mean? Your, your spouse? And, and, and now I'm speaking for brethren, I don't know how it goes with sisters, although, you know, I know it works both ways. I'm just, I'm just trying to make a point about the way it is, where we live here on the earth. There are hidden agendas, and that's what prevents the thing from working out. A gathering, you know, a people, a kingdom, that's why the present reality that we live in, it's got to go. Cause the philosophy says that when you don't serve the people, a government don't serve the people, that's it, you got to go. Right now, we certainly live in a government that don't serve the people. It serves itself. So, in other words, you know, to make a long story short, if we gonna be together, we gotta be able to trust one, we gotta know that what's in your heart is not deception. It's love there, that there's genuineness there, that you don't have any ulterior motives. That's the only way it could work, and the Creator is saying, I'm the only one that could do that, and I'm gonna, I'm going to bring it to pass. It seems like we have to, he gonna teach us, now you see, you were on the earth, right? You saw how it goes, don't you? You saw, you see how it goes, when you don't have a foundation, you deceive one another. You kill one another, you see there, you see what happened? Now here, go over here, where all your brethren are gathered, you know? The love and kindness of the brethren, that would really make you suspicious, you know? You know? That's what the Creator said, he's gonna, that's the situation that he's going, you know, that we're going to be in. So let me go to my room and share some scriptures before the reading. Now, what I'mma do with the reading again, I'mma rehash what I talked about yesterday, so to see if the Creator will give us some more fruit. And I was also minded to say this. If you brethren wanna come on and you wanna give, uh, a learning on what we've been going over, if you want to give your, your, your perspective on what we've been talking about, hey, look here, man, by all means, by all means, man, if, if, if you're being inspired to do that, man, I would, by all means, man, you are more than welcome. If you want, let me put the link in the room right now. All you gotta do is click that link, I'll bring you on. You click that link, I'll bring you on, and you could give your interpretation of what we've, have been talking about. You are more than welcome, man, more than welcome. It's a good opportunity, take advantage of, you know, bless your brethren with your perspective. You, you can't be wrong, as a faith is. I mean, you know, you can be wrong, but as long as you're sincere, you know what I mean? You're not trying to deceive anybody, you know? The fact that you hear is showing that you can attain to the Creator's voice. So we can trust that, and we can listen to you. And we could treat what you say with great deference, you know? Now, let me go to my room real quick and share before I get to the, uh, I'mma go back over what we've been talking about. I'mma try, I'mma, I'mma read what we haven't got, what the, the last file of the special session. And just see what we can get out of that. But I wanna highly encourage brethren, if you wanna come and give your take on like what the numbers mean, the times of Dan, the times of Dan Ha, where we are now, the upcoming sub-cycle of the, uh, the run-up unto the harvest of twenty forty-nine. What Radiance Anthology says about from now until then. I'mma touch on all that when we go back to the reading. Let me share some verses real quick. Some things that I have been looking at, that I like to share. If anyone is new to this channel, you can look at the description area. Also, there's a way to donate to orphans, I just added a link. The inspiration was good enough to give me a, uh, idea uh, as a way to, if you want, you know, you can support an orphan, you know? And so there's a link in the description area, but for anybody new to the channel, I have my brethren in the description area, you can click on their link, and you can get the way they do the flavor, how, how they bring the, the Oaspy. Uh, how they, you know, you can decide if you, uh, I mean, we all have different, you know? We all have different flavors, so far as how we present the Oaspy and other learning to you. One may apply to you, but one brother may fit your character, your personality better than another. But the choice is yours, just so long as you learn to elevate in your spirit. That's the only, you know, and then let the inspiration take it from there. How you want to grow is up to you, and who you listen to is up to you, as long as you can receive wisdom, knowledge, understanding, that sort of thing. So here's something I posted in my room, it says, see, this goes along with the cities. You know, there's organization in the spirituals, you know, second resurrection, third resurrection, third resurrection is communities. Second resurrection is cities. Brethren, you know, what is the second resurrection? It's like marriage. Then you get to third resurrection, that's like communities, you know? And that's the, uh, order of ascension. First resurrection is the self. You know, you pretty much only, you still, your mind is not gravitated, it's not, it's not elevated to the point. It's not ascended to the point, you still more interested in yourself, yourself, your, uh, you know, your own interests. So, as faith is, we know that we gotta grow out of that. We gotta learn to appreciate one another. And we will learn to appreciate one another. Creator, he's gonna remove that suspicion out of our souls where we can give our full self to our brethren. We, you know, without having to come, become subject to, you know, evil vibrations, you know? Does the brother want my wife? He, you know, does my wife want my, my newfound friend, you know, and, you know, that's what it, that's what it all is right there. To be together in the Kingdom of God, serving one another, not having a need in the world, but simply to enjoy the love of the Creator, the way we have always wished we could. And so here it says, you shall divide yourselves into groups, see, to be together. That's the only point I'm trying to make here in posing this. You should divide yourselves into groups. Now, this is talking about the organization and the spiritual, from what I can see. Like, all you brethren who are, let's say, I don't know, uh, born to be nurses, you know? You, you go over here, y'all be together, you're gifted to do this. Is, you know what I mean? You get my point. It says, and every group shall be in charge of its special business. See, cause you're gifted. Maybe we don't know what our gifts are yet, but we're gonna know. We're gonna be assigned to our specialty, to minister to brethren. It's not gonna be a barter system where in order for you to minister to me, I gotta give you this. I don't see that. I see it as us willing, I mean, to keep the reality the way we have always wished it to be. You know, where there is no such thing as money or trade. All gifts belong to the Creator. And the thing that we can't seem to understand is, you don't take your gift and minister to yourself for your own good. It's meant for you to bless the brother. Bless him, that way there is no need. I mean, there's no, you know how in this reality, you know what I mean? Capitalism. That's not the Kingdom of God. That, I'm sorry, that is not the Kingdom of God, man, you know? It says, and each group shall stand in Moab, that's the spirit, that's a, uh, a spiritual realm, if I'm not mistaken. As one member of Jehovah's judgment seat, and you shall divide according to your talents, see, there it is again, your talents, and group together. Each of you choosing a department in which you will have the greatest wisdom and strength. So you have to assume that we will know our greatest wisdom and strength, that the Creator will reveal it to us. I wanted to say, my greatest wisdom and strength is gonna be, is gonna be eating grapes, you know? The eating department. You get my drift. It says, withdraw now to complete your groups. According to the rates, my proper officers will assign, like, those of you who are grade thirty, you go over here, those of you grade forty, you go over here, fifty, over here sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, over there. And then return again to Moab, and in Jobi's name, take the seats allotted to you all. All right, here's another one, it says, your messenger shall come to me and to my house, and my house shall be their house. They shall behold my labor, and they shall admonish me wisely. Now, I forget why I posted this. There is a reason, but I forgot. To none other will I bow myself in supplication and worship. This really just the faith, this creed. To none other will I bow myself in supplication and worship. In your presence, I will labor for peace on all occasions. Here's something else, you made me above the diamond, talk about faith this. And above all precious stones, but the man of darkness goes after these, the man of darkness goes after these. You know, the daytees of life. The world, the whole world, the vast majority of the world is materialism. Your children, he does not care for. Your children, the world, wow, that's heavy, ain't it? See, you read stories all the time where people, you know, kill other people for what they have. Your children, he does not care for, the faith is, or the Uzzian. Your children, he does not care for, he does not see. Truly, I will run quickly to them and lift them up. So this is like an angel or an Ashar. Their mindset, they're sizing up the situation. Their mind is, I'mma go and help remedy the situation, take care of it. It says, they shall be gems for my raiment. Now, I don't know how that works, but they shall become a glory in your sight. Yes, I will turn their eyes up toward your holy place. That's really the anthem of the faith, this, our mission, our desire. Cause really, we know internally, ah, Asonaz, I was talking about you earlier. Really, you brethren know internally. If I may, I have to be vulgar here for, to make my point. You know, you're holding the winning lottery tickets numbers. You brethren know that in your soul. You know, you're holding the winning trillion dollar lottery. Number, you brethren, you know that, you know? Yeah, Asonaz, just talking to you about the dialogue we had yesterday about, uh, the, you know, I was speculating about the Kingdom of God, and, uh, I was, uh, you likened it to a bartering system, you know, we were talking about something, and, uh, I was, uh, sharing with your brethren that the inspiration that I got today was that it won't be such where I have to give you something back in order for you to ministering to me, you know? I mean, the inspiration that came to me just today, talking about the kingdom, you know? And, uh, you know, freely you have received, freely give, talking about the Kingdom of God, you know? So I forgot the other point that, uh, and so here's something else, it says, uh, in the far-off corners of the world, you have sown the seed of evil and death. And a man of darkness, he hurries there. But your glories, he will not observe. He will not observe. He builds this foundation of perishable things. But the hope of the righteous man lights up the inner chamber, the soul. The hope, that's why. You see, there, it just happened again, man. The crater does it all the time. I was just mentioning, you brethren, you know that you hold the trillion dollar lottery ticket. You brother know that. You know it in your soul, man, that the crater has dealt you a ace of spades. And so now you can rest. You're, he's shown you, the creator has come to you secretly. He's come to us, man. He given us something we know ain't common at all. And the anointing behind it is so great. Now your only desire is to share it. You want to share it. See, that's why it says here, and I was mentioning how the crater did it again, man. I was just mentioning about the soul and how you are holding the tr- the trillion dollar lottery winning number. And it speaks of the confidence you have. And it's saying the same, now it says it right here in this verse. It says, but the hope of the righteous man lights up the inner chamber. Now I'll be quoting that with his soul. The hope we have, we live in a world, there is no, you know? I saw a video where the hope of that rich man, do you know he had pallets of a hundred dollar bills? Pallets! Y'all know what a pallet is, right? He had pallets of this stuff right here. A wooden pallet. Oh, it's time for the reading of the word. That's what he had stacks of a hundred and he had about, I saw four of them. He had stacks of hundred dollar bills about four feet high in a storage compartment. Upon a pallet. See? That's his hope. That's, you see, he, he, his confidence is he rests easy because of that. You know? That's his hope. Even though it's perishable. He builds his foundation in perishable things. Time for the reading of the word. But the hope of the righteous man lights up the inner chamber. He sees your judgment seat. He seeks you in all good things and in the durable, he glorifies you in your works, talking about the mindset of the faith this. Now, time for the reading of the word. So I'm going to read what I didn't get a chance to. I want to read the final page of city special session, the part that I haven't read yet. And then I'm going to just basically go back and forth. Just doing like a recap. Okay, now, this is it right here, the part we didn't, the part we hadn't finished yet. And it was talking about, uh, we left off where it was talking about the crater. Now he appears to us. Let me get to screen. I'm fixing the screen. You're not on it. So bear with me. I gotta fix it. Okay, uh, let's see, am I, am I, do I have it on the screen? Probably not. Okay, let's, let's fix this. Okay, there we go. All right, so quick little recap. We up to this point. We've been learning about the cyclical nature of reality. And the angels have been showing us how they work. They've been trying to, they've been showing us like the events, uh, how we can judge whether it's a time of light or a time of darkness, or how we could perceive our reality. Like we've been looking at the beginning of Cosman and uh, the events that have happened since then, advances in man's thinkings, digression in man's actions. We've been learning how great times alike can also bring with it great times of darkness. And so we're uh, uh, so basically that's been the flavor of this, this reading, this studying. And uh, eighteen forty-eight, the effect of the how eighteen, the beginning of Cosman, how it has worked in our progression. And uh, we see, we've looked at the events of, you know, like how the high times have worked. We learned how after the first dad which was I think a time of thirty-eight years or fifty years, one or the other of a great light enlightenment. And then from the end of that period up until like our day, it's been great fluctuations. And we've been able to look at events of the world where we can see a great rise in spirituality where the Radiance Anthology says that what we saw that made more, that got more attention than the spiritual. You know, we saw things like the roaring twenties, you know, we saw the summer of love, you know? We saw uh, it seems like they really took, it seems like they really overshadowed the spiritual progression of those times as well as other events shortly after Cosman. You know, when the Fox sisters, when they came on the scene. When the Fox sisters came on the scene and they lit it all off. That we can only know that it caused people to think about the eternal. But as the time went on. As the time as the time went on, then it seems the light took different shape. Basically, that's what this whole reading has been about. How the light looked since eighteen forty-eight and how what went on in heaven? How it manifested here on the earth and uh, the angels are telling us. The angels, oh man. The angels are telling us how the unseen, how it looks. You know, how the unseen has played out in our reality, how it plays out in the actions of men. And one of the bullet points that we have been given for our day, in other words, a bullet point, a data point, a data point is like information whereby you can make judgments about what's, where you are spiritually, what's going on in the spirit and what's going on in our reality and the spiritual data points and the angels. The angels have been telling us, this is how you can see that how we work. You know, we bring the inspiration and then we give, you know, and then it, it plays out this way on earth. You know, there's a, a, a rise in spirituality, which is, it's easier to see the digression of the, you know, when there's greater light, there's greater corruption as well, the flip side. And uh, like we mentioned, the summer of love. Where you could see the spirituality and it was pretty, pretty easy to see the spirituality. You know? Crystal blue persuasion. A new vibration, crystal blue persuasion, crystal. Dun dun, blue persuasion, you know? That song, it had a lot of spirituality to it, you know? And but it played out the wrong way. In the sense that uh, it caught, you know what I mean? It's like, it's, it's like, the, the reading is showing us people. They were under that vibration, but it was playing out the wrong way. And since then, it's been a march towards the righteousness of the creator. It's like the creator is saying, you got this in you. I know you want to be together. But do it this way. You know, think, think towards your brother like this. Do this for your brother, live this way. Don't turn, you don't need to turn to alcohol, you know? You don't, you don't need to turn to drugs or, you know, you don't need to turn to exterior, you know, stimuli. You don't, you don't have to do that. You know? And so it's like the crater is showing us here. Get together, you know, get rid of your materialism, get rid of that. You know, learn about me. Learn to love your brethren, learn that to minister to your brethren. That provides the greatest stimuli. That, that, that provides what you, you know, because you get a kick out of helping somebody of being able, you know, you get my drift, you know? Let's look at this real quick. Let's do some reading. So it says here how the crater appears and uh, or how the light works and um, it said something in the previous reading about how the creator and how are the light and events they appear all of a sudden. And it says, a ten year increase in intensity will stir the masses. I should go back and look at what we read before. I'm, I'm gonna get hung up though. Let me just go with this and let's, let's uh, let's, let's see what we can get. It says, ten year increase in intensity will stir the masses. And if you think the pace and complexity of life has been intensifying. Now I did read this, but I, I went kind of fast the other day. I'm going to take a little time today because this is the last page we haven't read. Let me see Nazarian says, I purchased E, E, EP one planet rescue. I love it. Brother, I have no idea what you talking about. I have no idea what that is. Is this some type of uh, you know? I have no idea. I can't even make fun of it. So why don't you tell us what it is? In other words. So it says, a ten year increase in intensity will stir the masses. And if you think the pace and complexity of life has been intensifying at an alarming rate over the past twenty years. So we deduced that if you take a hundred forty-three plus eighteen forty-eight, it brings you to like nineteen ninety-one or something like that, or you know? Let me get the trusty old calculator out because I'm gonna need it. Online calculator. Okay, so you got eighteen forty-eight plus one hundred and forty-three, it brings you to, thank you, Lisbon. So now, yeah, to two thousand and one. So maybe you brethren can look at um, the events, like, you know what I'm doing? I'm gonna read this. I'm gonna go straight through and then double back and we're gonna, we're gonna delve and we're gonna look at these numbers and see what we can see that happened. That was the, the effect of the cyclical nature of the light. So it says, so before nineteen ninety-one, it's saying those were the past twenty years. Okay? It says, if you think the pace and complexity of life has been intensifying at an alarming rate over the past twenty years, that would be from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen ninety-one. It says, you will be awed by the next ten from nineteen ninety-one to two thousand and one. And we know what happened in two thousand and one. And that set a lot, it was the war on terror that George Bush, I still remember that speech. I don't remember many things. But I remember that speech because I even in my unenlightenment, it told me, I internalized that speech he gave is saying, we getting ready to do some dark stuff on y'all. See, we getting ready to go dark on y'all. We getting ready to operate surreptitiously in deceiving you and bringing chaos and evil and brother, that is the way the government work. I want to say it again, two thousand and one is nine eleven. Here, now I'm minded to show y'all this. Since we bringing this up, let me show y'all something. On y'all own time, look at this. Look at this on y'all own time. I know I talked to y'all about this before. On your own time, look at this. On y'all own time, look at this. Look, look at this. You see that? No planes hit. That is a bombastic statement because people are so sure of their senses. Look at all these videos from different people who did the forensics. See, look, look at all this. Try to find the videos with the longest runtime. See? You see this? People were positive. They saw what they saw. See, here's a good one. If there were no planes, then what happened to the passengers? And they tell you. See? Here's some more videos. See, look at that. Now, this was an event for your behind. That's why Radiance Anthology said, if you think nineteen seventy-one, you know? To nineteen ninety-one was something. Did you wait? You know? So look, look at all the videos showing you. Look at this, total proof, no planes hit, total, see? They use Hollywood on y'all, on us. They use Hollywood. See? They use Hollywood on us. Do you know there were only like three videos they showed the world? Those were edited videos of the planes hitting the towers. Those were edited. Did y'all know that? So it says, you will be awed by the next ten from one forty-three to one fifty-three. So whatever happened, see, we, it's like that event was so magnificent. We don't even know the significance of the different events. Of one forty-three up to one fifty-three. Can y'all name some more? Let me see. I can't do it right now. Maybe when I get finished with this reading, I can go back and try to look at events because it was a time of, and, and we can look at the chart to see what the light was doing. It says, there will be an increase in mortal conflicts, talking about the next ten. And even now, this is the situation. There will be an increase in mortal conflicts over many parts of the globe. An increase of mortal conflicts. Let me do something here. Something is saying do the calculation. Okay. Okay. Yeah, that's what Elizabeth did. So why? Why do you have me doing that? What, what is it? One fifty three. It was two thousand and one. Okay, maybe I'll get the inspiration later. It says there will be an increase in mortal conflicts over many parts of the globe. And at the same time. There will be great changes in spiritual attitudes and aspirations. So. It's talking about from nineteen ninety one to two thousand and one. It says there will be an increase in mortal conflicts over many parts of the globe. And at the same time, there will be great changes in the spiritual attitudes and aspirations of mortals. As a response to the surge in the Vortexian tide. That's the rising tide of light. Our angel emissaries will be working hard but silently behind the scenes to help prepare for the social changes that will follow over. The end of the second century from one fifty to two hundred after Cosmet. So it says our angel emissaries will be working hard. But silently behind the scenes to help prepare for the social changes. That will follow over the end of the second century. They say the end of the second century. Is one fifty to two hundred. One fifty to two hundred. You see, that's two thousand and one. Okay. I know, wait a minute. From, okay, nineteen ninety eight, hundred fifty plus eighteen forty eight. Okay, nineteen ninety eight. Nineteen ninety eight. No, 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 Elizabeth, I think it's. From after Cosman. See, that's one hundred and fifty. To. Two hundred, if you can see my cursor. So you have to go from after Cosmet, a hundred fifty years after Cosmet. Is nineteen ninety eight, right? And then two hundred years is the harvest. Two hundred years is the harvest. Okay, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to the end and then we're gonna double back and look at the dates here. Try to see what they mean. It says by then the world as you know it. Will be quite different. So it's saying by the time we get to the harvest. Two hundred years after Cosman, by then the world as you know it will be quite different. We cannot elaborate on that statement. That will be reserved for a later date. Have no fear. We will give you what you need to know. When the time is right, you must understand that some things you are un, that some things you are unable to receive because of your mindset. It is not yet right. Other things we cannot convey for security reasons. And that's why I was talking about, I think the thing that they couldn't convey. Right now, or that they can't elaborate on. I think the thing that they can't, well, the inspiration that came to me was this. Right when I read that. Christ in you, the hope of glory, King James Version. I think this is what they cannot convey. Now I could be wrong. Because. It describes our coming on the world. Now, again, I don't subscribe to the New Testament. Jesus Christ. I don't believe, I believe that the New Testament is speaking of the other. Jesus Christ. Zeratul, Yessu, Yah, Yahshua, I think. And I think this is what they can't elaborate on. I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm just saying it came to my inspiration, so I'm sharing it. Christ in you, our creator should be as faith as we would say Creator in you, the hope of glory. And I think that's why the inspiration is coming on me to talk about how we clear the way. Make straight the paths of the Lord. You know? That, that's how we make, we make. You know, I think that was a message of John the Baptist too. Make straight the paths of the Lord. Now you gotta translate all this. You know what I mean? Make straight the path of the Lord. A voice of one calling in the desert. Prepare the way of the Lord. Make straight paths for him. Every valley shall be filled in. Every mountain hill made low. Those are governments, I think, is speaking of. And the valley, I think, is some way to referring to faith is being filled in. I could be wrong. You know what I'm saying? I'm just offering these things. The crooked road shall become straight, the rough ways smooth, and all mankind will see God's salvation. Now. Somebody like me, I read this. And I, my mindset is that it refers to the faith this one way or another. That it refers to faith this one way or another. It talks about all mankind will see God's salvation. I think faith is they carry that message. So now I could be wrong. You know what I mean? Whatever you, your inspiration gives to you. I would say follow that. You know what I mean? You follow that. You know, you wouldn't follow me. I'm, I'm, I'm only hoping, you know, I'm just hoping, man, you know? That I'm learning to listen to my soul. It seems like. Since doing the soul confirmations, the Creator has given me, it's like. Today was a really powerful day, man, you know? Where I, I mean, I sat, I just sat. And I, I just listened. And the insight said, okay, uh, talk to the people. About living in cities. Okay, talk to the people. About confirming, making straight. The paths of the Lord. That's basically what I was describing. Okay, I was trying to describe. You know? Make. That, that's how you do it. You know, you make straight paths, you deal with your soul, confirm it. Build it up. Now, what have I done here? So let's go back. So I think so far as the angels saying, we. We must take care not to betray our plans to our disadvantage. And I think that is. Their plans are to prepare us. Oh, let me share the screen. Are to get us prepared for the Creator, not Christ, but. Well, Christ is simply knowledge anyway. Remember that word? Doesn't that word Christ mean knowledge? So we could say. We must take care that they're telling us what, you know, I think I'm, I'm trying to share what that is. So if I think is Christ in us, oh, the glory is equal to saying knowledge in you. The hope of glory, knowledge in you, the hope of glory. It says. We, the angels, we are concentrating all our efforts from now and through the next fifteen years. To ensure not in next fifteen years, if it's going from. Let me see now, let's go back. What would, what would the next fifteen years be? Okay, talk about the next ten. So let me see. From nineteen ninety one. The next fifteen years, let's see, it says. We are concentrating all our efforts from now and through the next fifteen years to ensure the results we have envisioned to follow at that time. Okay, now when was the next fifteen years? See, I can't, let me, let me get through all of it. How much more do I got to go here? Okay, let me get through all of it. And then let's go back. It says we are concentrating all our efforts from now and through the next fifteen years to ensure the results we have envisioned to follow. At that time, though most of you dear mortals will have little awareness of the intense activity building now on our plateau. Of the blossoming presence, as we prefer to call it, the blossoming presence. Very interesting. Yet we will become increasingly active as the lower node of our present wave of light turns about, meaning. From. Twenty twenty five. I'll show you, I'll show you the chart what this is talking about. It says that they're going to become more active. It says. As the lower node. Of our presence, of our present wave. Remember the chart? It's like. A Wall Street chart showing you the stocks. And activity over a period of time goes up, goes down, you know, a jagged line. And they're saying at the time that it, the light is at its lowest ebb. When Pluto went to Aquarius, when Pluto went to Aquarius last month. It shows that was the lowest ebb. The light was at its lowest ebb. Okay? When Pluto went to Aquarius for the next twenty years last month. The light began to turn about. And it climbs energetically ever upward. Until the dawn of this subcycle Dan is reached near two hundred. After Cosman, that's twenty forty nine. Now, it says we will be pressing ever closer upon the consciousness of mortals. See? We're, so I think that's why we're, we're talking about the soul. Very intensely right now. Now. If I may be vulgar for a second. In order to try to paint a picture. What's going on right now, it seems is equal to an earthly relationship. Where, you know? One thing I remember about the early days of. Your girlfriend, you having your girlfriend. And really they keep it up. It's just part of a woman to provide a clean home, you know? And you're getting ready to come over and they do all these things, you know, they, they go the extra mile. New vacuum, clean the couches, clean the walls, clean every, there ain't a speck of dust in a woman's house. You know, especially when she is entertaining somebody. And it's like same way for faith. This is like, we know that something is coming. The angels are saying, okay, prepare yourself, make straight the ways of the Lord. I'm just, you know, it should be the Creator or it should be the angels or, you know? And the way we do that is we confirm our soul and by faith, let it do its work. You know? We clean in the house. You gotta believe it, man. If it's telling us to affirm our soul, we are clean in the house. So that. When we entertain our Shar's or angels or whoever. You know, the walls ain't all splattered with mud, you know, they come in, would you let somebody, even a single man? Wouldn't let somebody come into they, they apartment, man. They might let the dishes in the sink, you know, you know what I mean? They might, you know? Rolled up paper, you know, here or there, you know? You know? But there's some things even a single brother wouldn't allow, you know? He might run the broom a couple of times, you know? You get my drift? You make sure that your habitation. You know you got somebody coming over. You want to prepare it. Same way here. It says. Yeah, squeaky clean. That's a sister, you know? They want to get, they know the importance of. A, you know, especially if they have a, a, a love interest coming over, you know? They know people think things about how you keep yourself. Cleanly, cleanly, cleanliness wise. You know? It says we old angels, the angels will be pressing ever closer upon the consciousness. They'll be pressing ever closer upon our minds. So that a new consciousness and new awareness will begin to dawn upon the minds of mortals. A new wave of benevolence will begin to awaken. In their hearts and lead them toward a degree of passion, compassion and longing for the blessings of peace. Now I think that has something to do with World War. Something is going to happen where people are going to say, we don't want no more of that smoke forever. We want to go the other way, man. More and more people will put away the bloody sacrifice. See, that just happened again, man, you know? Man, Creator, you just, I can't, man, you really amazing, you know? Now it's confirming what I was just saying. It says more and more people will put away the bloody sacrifices, slaughtering and consuming. The decaying corpses. Okay, so now this time about animal. Killing animals for food. Okay, so that's not confirming what I was saying earlier. Okay. Okay, good, good. I mean, it's not what I thought it was. It says more and more people will put away the bloody sacrifices, slaughtering and consuming the decaying corpses. Of Jehovah's helpless creatures. And as their numbers begin to grow exponentially, the rise of. The unslaughtered animals, so will their renewed interest in the truths of the spirit be awakened as well? So the less animal slaughtering for food. The greater our spirit. Truths will be awakened as well. So they say be perceptive and watch the signs of the times and see the touch of our hand in the dead games ahead. Where out of the clouds of contention and turmoil, will holy Cosmet Day emerge? It will blossom and give fruit to a world unlike that which we have known in the past. So it sounds to me like Aquarius. Aquarius is assigned water to the world. The water bearer. He gives men water to drink. That's refreshment. That's relief. We, your angelic mentors will come forth and speak. To the children of Cosmet. In ever increasing numbers until all the falsehood and darkness of ages past are washed forevermore. From the face of the planet. There you go, Elijah. Elijah's an Aquarius. And until the lamb of peace can find rest among proverbial lines and fear not. And then it says the units. Used to express light darkness on the graph are merely relative proportions of gray. Okay, so they're saying somewhere near. Somewhere close, but not exact, and have no specific value as such. Though we sometimes hear them referred to as lumens instead of the cumbersome term of units of light. Okay, I don't know exactly what that means, but, uh. All right, now that concludes the reading of that. Now let me bring up the chart. Let me bring up the chart again. So let me bring up the chart. And let's look at the chart. Cause from this time, the chart is going to show us what the light. Is going to. Let me make smaller. Make it smaller so I can find the chart. Make it smaller so I can find the chart. Okay, let me find the chart. So. From, the chart is going to show us. When the light will arising time of light. Okay, there it is, right there. Now, one hundred and seventy-five years after Dan is twenty. I think eighteen. Or twenty twenty-three. Let's go to the calculator. I think it's twenty twenty-three, right? Eighteen forty, or no, eighteen. Eighteen forty-eight plus. A hundred and fifty-three. Let's see, I'm doing something wrong, hold on. A hundred. And fifty-three. Brings you to twenty twenty-three. A hundred and fifty-three. I'm doing something wrong. I'm doing something wrong. Because fifty years, what am I doing? I'm doing something wrong. Let me look at this again. Oh, 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 wow. It's eighteen forty-eight plus a hundred, let me see if somebody caught my mistake. Yeah, I do it, I do, I wasn't even looking at the screen. Inspiration said, look at the screen, look at the screen. I said, what am I doing wrong? Then it's reached and said, look at the screen, and. I clicked up the chat. Man, it's funny being me, it is so funny, man. I mean, it's kind of, you know? You start slipping mentally, you know, you get older, man, you know? Thanks, Elizabeth, yeah. A hundred and seventy-five, twenty twenty-three, yeah. So what we read, it was saying that as the chart says here. It went in an increment of, it went from one twenty-five, it went in twenty-five year increments. Here's the serpent, here's us. Twenty-five year increments. It gets to one seventy-five, that's twenty twenty-three, that's where we are right now. And if you look up, the light is at its lowest point. See, it's at its lowest node. See, it's at its lowest node. So from one hundred and seventy-five years after Cosmo. Now it's going to start going up. It's going to start going up. Oh, share the screen, nobody caught me. I've got to share the screen. So I was, here's the serpent. From since Cosmo, it's made its way all the way over here. Here's the lowest node right here. The lowest node. Meaning from our time, and I would have to think especially, ah, no, I beat you, Elizabeth. I beat you, I beat you. See, there's a delay, actually, she beat me. But there's a delay. That saved me. See, from the time you guys post things. Till the time it shows up. It helps me to correct my mistake before y'all see it, see? So from one hundred and seventy-five years, which brings after Cosmo, which brings us to twenty twenty-three. The light is at its lowest node, but now Pluto has gone into Aquarius, so the Creator is saying. Now you're going to notice it's going to pick up. Now, from what I can overstand. Increased light means increased darkness, if we're a daygy. If I'm not mistaken. The faithists are going to separate. There seems to be a separation. A greater separation. Which is why I think we are talking about being prepared, prepare the way of the Lord. Make straight paths. How do you do that? What we have been shown up till now is confirm your soul, could just, just confirm your soul, even if you don't see it. Say it, confirm it, just keep confirming it. It's like water for the soul, you just keep confirming it, man, you know? Now, it's at the end of the program, so. I'm gonna pick it up on Monday. I'm gonna pick up now, I'm gonna just pick up dates. And events in history. For Monday, I'mma move up what I have scheduled. I'mma stay on this, and then we're gonna look at in greater detail. We're gonna look at the dates and see what we can get out of them. We're gonna look at the numbers, we're gonna figure them out. We're gonna look at events, and then we're gonna see what we can learn so that we can prophesy. About things to come. So hopefully the Creator. Will give us, he'll give us wisdom, so that we can know the things to come. So, and, and I think, you know, I'm getting something right now from my inspiration. That's telling me about the first dad. And it's telling me that the Fox Sisters, what happened then will happen again. The Fox Sisters, the inspiration that came on them, where they can make contact with the unseen. Is going to, is going to come again. Now, I could be wrong. So I'm gonna stop it right there, it's time for the end of the video, I did get as far as I, I wanted to, I want it kind of slower than I planned to. But don't worry, we're gonna really, we're gonna get everything we could get out of this reading, we're gonna get as much as we. You know, I'mma go back, we're gonna look at things over again. We're gonna try to get everything we could get out of this, because. I know, I, I'm just under the inspiration that the Creator, that he's, he wants us to know this. That he, this information has got to get out, because the time is now. Pluto has gone into Aquarius, that means that now we witnessing, we already for the last couple, since Pluto went to Aquarius. Remember, one hundred and seventy-five years after Cosmo is twenty twenty-three. Remember? What happened in twenty twenty-three? Already, we already talked about it, look what happened. When did Pluto first go into Aquarius? Twenty twenty-three. Right there on the screen, see that? And then it went out of Aquarius, see, but now it's an Aquarius to stay for the next twenty years. That means the light is going to steadily increase, and I would add to brethren who prepare themselves. So let's go ahead, let's do the soul confirmation, it's time for the end of the, time for the end of the video, let me get to the, uh. Let's do the soul confirmations, and then let's close it out, so. Let's do the soul confirmation. Uh, let's see, let's get this screen prepared. Yeah, the Creator, Elizabeth. You know? Now, where was I? Was this it? Was this what we read earlier? I want to do the same thing that we read earlier. Okay, this wasn't it. So we can add force to what we said earlier. I want to do the same one that we said earlier. Okay, here it is. All right, so let's do the soul confirmation. Bring it up on the screen here. Let's do the soul confirmations that we can call it a day. All right, now what did we do today? We did these three right here, I can't highlight it. Let me make the screen bigger, I hope you can see it. Uh, let's do the soul confirmations. Okay, here we go. Now, I'm gonna start right here, I am soul, I'm gonna go all the way down to heal my being, this is what we did earlier, okay? All right, so we're gonna say these three things together, may the Creator bless the reading of the soul confirmations, okay? Ready on three, one, two, three, I am a soul organized of the potencies of the living eternal I am. Verse two, I call all my soul power into expression to quicken all my organs. And to reorganize my body into an image of health and perfection. Verse three, the great spirit is the power that now works through my soul to quicken, purify, and heal my being. Again, verse one, I am a soul organized for the potencies of the living eternal I am. Verse two, I call all my soul power into expression. To quicken all my organs and to reorganize my body into an image of health and perfection. Verse three, the great spirit is the power that now works through my soul to quicken, purify, and heal my being. One more time, one, two, three, I am a soul organized of the potencies of the living eternal I am. Verse two, I call all my soul power into expression. To quicken all my organs and to reorganize my body into an image of health and perfection. Verse three, the great spirit is the power that now works through my soul to quicken, purify, and heal my being. All right, brethren, we did it, you know, soul confirmations. Yeah, thank you, Elijah, praise be to Creator. And Creator, thank you for this soul confirmations and the, the reading tonight in which you showed us that. The way that we make straight the paths of the Lord is to clean our. The channel between our soul and the spiritual, you showed us how to do it. We realize we live in a world where people don't have this information and do not know how to prepare their soul for. Through the soul confirmations, and it is a pity, and we don't want that, and. We ask for a greater, we ask for a greater influence on our reality, because we're not here to destroy, but to. We're here to build up, and so Creator, me and my brethren, we want to participate in. The building up and not the tearing down, so thank you for this information. And would you please add any other understanding? We presently don't have to help us to prepare for whatever it is that. The angels said that they cannot reveal to us right now, but they will. So Creator, again, thank you for our gathering, we were able to meet with one another for a little, little more time. And, uh, so, thank you, and brethren, thank you for joining me. And, uh, no videos on the weekend, and so. Monday, we're gonna pick up again, we're gonna pick up again, and just do a, uh, summary recap of all these things. So brethren, thank you for joining me, blessing me, blessed my soul to see you, brethren, to be able to have fellowship with you, brethren. And Monday, till I see you again, Creator willing, peace be unto you, shalom.